It is seven o'clock. We will reconvene in open session, this regular meeting of the Waco ISD Board of Trustees. The Board has been in closed session under Section 551.074 of the Texas Government Code, and no action was taken. Welcome. We've got a big crowd tonight. We appreciate your interest and support of the Waco Public Schools and that you've joined us tonight to recognize many of the accomplishments of our students and staff. I also want to extend a welcome to anybody watching at home on Channel 17. And as I do each month, I will remind you that the Board's purpose is to set goals, listen to reports of the Superintendent, approve budgets, contracts, and personnel appointments, and to make policy for the district. We are not here to make management decision or solve problems of individuals. It's management, for a little while longer, it's the sole responsibility of the Superintendent and her staff. Because we have such a large crowd tonight, if you have a cellphone or other electronic device with you, if you would turn it off, or at the very least, put it on silent, that would be greatly appreciated. And once again, we cannot tell you how much we appreciate your support of the Waco Public Schools and your willingness to entrust your children to us year after year. And with that, I would ask that you join us for a moment of silence as we pause for prayer, contemplation, meditation, or reflection. Well now move on to Item 6, Pledge of Allegiance, Dr. Kane.
Thank you, Mr. President. Tonight, we're pleased to have two students from Providence Heights Elementary School to lead us in the pledge. Please welcome second graders Tiffany Ramirez and Henry Gutierrez.
Ready?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Great job.
Let's do special recognition first. We're going to take a couple of things out of order. This says, if you're following along on the agenda, it says we're going to do oath of office and reorganization of the Board of Trustees. We're going to do that later in the meeting, and we'll proceed with special recognition at this time.
Thank you, Mr. President. Please join us in front of the dais for tonight's special recognition.
It has been a heck of a year in Waco ISD, and tonight, we're going to honor a lot of our students, and parents, and educators who helped us have such a great year. So we've got a lot of awards to go through tonight, and we'll start beginning with the special recognition portion of the meeting with an introduction of our pledge leaders, again from Providence Heights Elementary School. Tiffany Ramirez is in the second grade. Her favorite subjects are reading and math, and when she's not busy at school, she plays soccer with her sister and likes to ride her bicycle. Tiffany wants to be a teacher when she grows up. Good for her. HR will give her an application to start studying when she goes home. Tiffany's mother, Norma Ramirez, and Father Carlos Ramirez are here with us tonight. Please stand up so we can recognize you. And thank you for raising Tiffany to be so passionate about learning. And then Henry Gutierrez is also a second grade student at Providence Heights. His favorite subject at school is math. Henry enjoys reading the Mercy Watson book series. In his spare time, he likes games like tag and hide-and-go-seek. He's earned the name Helpful Henry in class because he's always the first one to help his classmates. And when Henry grows up, he wants to become a police officer. He is dressed for the part. And we'll introduce you to Chief Boatman from our Waco ISD Police Department here. Henry's mother, Juana Loivanos, and Father Rodolfo Gutierrez are here tonight. Would you wait? There you are. Thank you. And thank you for sharing Henry with us tonight. Congratulations to you as well. We also want to say thank you to our adopted school partner, Barnes &amp; Noble Booksellers, for donating the books that our pledge leaders received tonight. Well, last month, when we recognized the Waco ISD DELL Scholars, only two of them were present, and since it's such a distinguished honor, I mean, there's only 400 of these nationwide, and Waco ISD had three of them named as DELL Scholars, the Class of 2017, we thought it would be appropriate to reintroduce our third DELL Scholar. As a reminder, the students were selected because of their GPA, but DELL Scholars call GPA grit, potential, and ambition, and each of them will receive a $20,000 scholarship, a laptop from DELL, and textbook credits. How about that? The award is unique in the type of students it supports and how it nurtures those students on the path to a college degree. And tonight, we're recognizing one of our DELL Scholars, Christian Allen from Waco Christian intends to enroll at UT in Austin. She's a four-year cheerleader, a National Honor Society member, on the Student Council, and has broken records for having the highest individual score in the academic decathlon. Way to go, Christian, and congratulations. Very proud to have three Waco ISD students represented in a national class of 400, and Christian, congratulations. We know your future is very bright. Teachers of the Year. Last December, we honored 24 of our outstanding teachers representing each of our Waco ISD campuses, and following that recognition, the teachers were invited to submit an essay about their calling to be a teacher. Now, from those essays, a panel of educators determined our finalists and then visited their classrooms to decide on our final two teachers who would be crowned as Waco ISD District Teachers of the Year. So the Waco ISD District Elementary Teacher of the Year is Deborah DeGraff, a science lab teacher at Bell's Hill Elementary. Now, earlier this month, we continued our tradition in the district of making surprise notifications with a TV camera from WISD-TV rolling. So let's take you inside Mr. Graff's classroom. Well, we did more than that, I promise you. It was a joyful affair. Mrs. DeGraff has taught for seven years. Here we go.
Excuse me, but we have an announcement to make. The Waco ISD Elementary Teacher of the Year, Mr. Graff. Yay, kids, you're teachers! What an exciting... We have balloons for you. Okay, let's see if we can turn around this way.
Yes.
All right. Okay, Mr. Graff, congratulations.
Thank you, Dr. Kane.
So tell me, of all the teachers, I mean, we have so many great teachers, but it's you.
You really do.
You are the one. Tell me why.
Well... I do work at the best elementary school, I think, at Waco ISD. I get to do what I love to do. I get to work with 750 to 800 kids. I get to see every single child in the science lab, and again, I love what I do. So I'm blessed.
And so it's Waco ISD to have you.
Well, thank you.
Congratulations. Well, let's talk to that principal of yours. That rather mouthy principal of yours standing behind in the cheering section. Are you surprised?
I'm very surprised. I don't know what to say.
We kept a good secret, yes.
Ms. Cone, tell me why this teacher is the Elementary Teacher of the Year.
She is the Elementary Teacher of the Year because she thinks about her students and her school 24/7. She does the greenhouse, she does the garden, she plans lessons. I was in here the other day, and her children were making iMovies on their iPads. She incorporates not just the science that she teaches, but everything else. She's always trying and striving to do just a little bit more for these kids. If we have a program, she's here. Doesn't matter who's performing, what's going on, Mr. Graff is here 24/7.
Mr. Graff has taught for seven years. Her classroom's full of exciting things to engage her students in the world of science. You can find her in the greenhouse, or the school garden, after school, during school, and on weekends. She definitely helps all our students grow and bloom each day. As the 2017 District Elementary Teacher of the Year, Mr. Graff is receiving a cash award of $1,000 sponsored by Insurers of Texas presented by Nancy McCann. Very good. Thank you, Nancy, and congratulations, Ms. Deborah DeGraff, the Waco ISD Elementary Teacher of the Year. Now, our secondary Teacher of the Year in the district is James Villa. He's an eighth-grade science teacher at Tennyson Middle School. Now unfortunately, Mr. Villa could not be with us tonight. He's a chaperone on our eighth-grade Atlas trip in Washington, DC right now. We will honor him at a later date. Ladies and gentlemen, please offer another round of applause for our District Teachers of the Year. Now, the future of public education's largely dependent on the availability of promising young women and men who are passionate about being educators, and that's the impetus for our next award. Established by Waco ISD six years ago, the Virginia Dupuy First-Year Teacher Award is given to one of our many rising stars in the teaching profession. Now, the award is named, of course, after a former teacher and former mayor and one of Waco's strongest advocates for education, Virginia Dupuy. And we're honored that Ms. Dupuy has joined us tonight to present the award to Ms. Rachel Webon, a first-grade teacher at Cedar Ridge Elementary. We also surprised her in her classroom, and we'll take a look at that video.
Congratulations! Guess what? Oh, Ms. Webon! Oh, we are so... Students, I would like for you to meet the Waco ISD Virginia Dupuy First-Year Teacher of the Year, Ms. Webon.
Thank you.
Here you go for Ms. Williams. Here's your sign. Isn't that great? So, Ms. Smith, oh, don't thank us, we're thanking you. So, you, obviously, first year, you hired Ms. Webon.
I certainly did, and I have to say, and I've told her many times, that I believe she was definitely a God thing whenever I was reviewing applicants. I had interviewed and interviewed. It was late summer, and her application popped up on Teams, and when I saw it, and then when I interviewed her, I mean, she was exactly who we needed.
Do you agree with that?
Yes.
You think it was a God thing?
Yes, totally. I'm so glad I'm here. I love it. It's been the best year. It's been amazing.
So where did you graduate?
Baylor University.
Of course, huh? Our Baylor PDS student, yes.
As the Virginia Dupuy First-Year Teacher, Ms. Webon is receiving a cash award of $1,000 sponsored by Dupuy Oxygen, and Virginia Dupuy is presenting her with that right now. And according to Principal Helen Smith, Ms. Webon has an indescribable way with students, and she stands out in the classroom. She's got an exceptional understanding of the TEACs and how to relate the subject matter to students in various ways. She connects with her students in a manner usually exhibited by veteran teachers. Congratulations, Rachel, the winner of the Virginia Dupuy First-Year Teacher Award for 2017, and thank you, Virginia Dupuy. Well, effective campus leadership is the key ingredient to the success at any school, that leadership. And tonight, we're honoring our Principal of the Year for 2017 and a whole lot more. Now, our honoree has 33 years' experience on one campus, 44 years overall with Waco ISD. She began as a substitute teacher, has worked on only two campuses her entire time with the district. She's seen students walk through her doors for kindergarten and then return later as a teacher on her campus. She's adored by her students, loved by their parents, respected by her faculty and staff, and greatly admired by those she works on on a daily basis. By now, you may have guessed, the Waco ISD 2017 Principal of the Year is our very own Ms. Cone is a treasure for Waco ISD. I mean, think about that, 33 years at one campus is pretty incredible. And she, too, received the exciting news in a bit of a surprise at one of our monthly
As you know, it is that time of year, and we would like to congratulate the WISD Principal of the Year, Ms. Beville Cone. Let me take the crown off. There was no other choice. 33 years as a principal, not as an educator. 33 years as a principal. 34 years as a principal. I mean, I can't even... I was a principal eight years. I can't imagine. I can't imagine. But also, most of us were principals at different schools. When you're in the same school, it just becomes your school, and your personality, and you know what that school, it is compassionate, it is kind, it is thought of as inclusive, it is thought of as loving, and that's because you have been the principal for Bell's Hill for 34 years.
33 there, one someplace.
33 there. See why I'm confused? But well deserved. We are going to miss you so much, and if there was any way that I could rename that school, I would.
Beville, don't walk off. We're not done. As Principal of the Year, Ms. Cone is receiving a cash award of $1,000 sponsored by Central National Bank, and that will be presented to her by Brian Fonville. If you haven't guessed already, Ms. Cone announced earlier this year she'll be retiring in just a couple of weeks. We're going to go ahead and give her that 34th year now. As credit for that, she's made it through most of it. We'll certainly miss her. We want to wish her a happy, restful, and peaceful retirement. We only hope that you'll come back and visit us and bring us some cheer wearing that famous green felt Christmas dress that you're so well-known for. And Ms. Cone, thank you for many years of hard work and dedication to Bell's Hill Elementary and the children there, and congratulations being named our Principal of the Year. We have two more end-of-year awards for two very special people. On May 10th, a reception was held in honor of School Nurse Day, and we held a reception to celebrate all of our health services nurses and clinic aides for the important work they do on our campuses, and during that reception, we awarded two Nurse of the Year awards. Through their outstanding dedication to the nursing profession, our school nurses ensure the well-being and academic success of our students every day. Our 2017 Elementary Nurse of the Year is Nurse Helen Matthews from South Waco Elementary. She is an RN and a BSN. She's been with the district since 1998. She formed a Nurses Club for students as a motivation for them to attend classes and to do good in their schoolwork and then have, as a special, one of her special classes, to be a part of the Nurses Club. Our secondary Nurse of the Year for 2017 is Nurse Rebecca Blankenstein. She's from Tennyson Middle School. She's been with the district since 2001, and congratulations to both our nurses, and thank you for the wonderful care you provide our students each and every day. We have another educator who has earned a distinguished state award. Waco High School's Assistant Principal, James Stewart, was named a finalist for the 2017-2018 Outstanding High School Assistant Principal of the Year by the Texas Association of Secondary School Principals. Coach Stewart, a graduate, 1997, of Waco High. We're so proud. The state of Texas has recognized him for the work he does for our students and staff with the Lions. Congratulations, Coach Stewart. Lion pride runs deep. Man with a smile on his face every day. Good to see you, Coach Stewart. Well, each year, Duke University's Seventh Grade Talent Search identifies students across the country who have scored at or above the 95th percentile on a grade-level standardized test. Seventh graders taking college tests. Waco ISD had 68 students from various campuses who were identified. These seventh graders are invited to take the SAT or the ACT College Entrance Exam alongside high school juniors and seniors. They're seventh graders. The Duke program then hosts annual recognition ceremonies to honor the seventh graders who scored the highest on these exams, and tonight, we are pleased to honor two seventh grade students from Atlas Academy who fit this distinguished category. Abigail qualified for state recognition by the Duke Talent Identification Program. She's the daughter of Andrea and Aaron Zimmerman. Andrea has been an integral part of our successful HEB Celebrity Cook-Off fundraiser, and both she and her husband are active in the community. And Abigail, congratulations, Zimmermans, for doing a great job, and congratulations to you, young lady. Abigail, or Aaron and Andrea, could you guys wave so everybody can see who you are? There you go. And next, Sarah Stevens qualified for the prestigious Duke University Academy for Summer That academy is a three-week residential program for high-achieving students. Now, Sarah's the daughter of Ashley and Matt Stevens. Ashley and Matt, where are you? Stand up and wave. Oh, hey, there you are. I'm looking back here and back, okay? Ashley's a teacher at our Hillcrest PDS, and congratulations to these remarkable two students for their academic accomplishments. Again, they're seventh graders. Well, last month, we had Waco High School Theater Director and UIL Speech and Debate Coach Kaitlin Childress here to tell about the success of her Lincoln Douglas debaters. Tonight, we're recognizing her CX, or Cross-Examination Debate Teams, which have had great success for a program that's only three years old. At the District 185A Debate Tournament in February, the Waco High School team of Bridget Eichenberg and Sophia Swankie, both freshmen, took fourth place. While the team of Julia Nicholson and Sarah Sriram, both juniors, took fifth place. Now, this didn't qualify the Lions for state, but these debaters secured places as alternates when the advancing schools were unable to attend, and at the state tournament, both Waco High teams went 2-2 with extremely high speaker points, and that's a great record against the top teams in Texas. Eichenberg and Swankie were power-matched in the final round of prelims against the team that eventually took second place. So as freshmen, they are off to an amazing start. The second state meet appearance for both of them, so congratulations to the students and also to Head Speech and Debate Coach Kaitlin Childress. University High has also had students participate in the District 185A UIL Speech and Debate Contest. Instead of debate, though, they chose the route of UIL Prose and Poetry, which is an oral interpretation of literature set after a theme chosen by the UIL. And from the University High Prose and Poetry Team, we're honoring tonight Terry Murphy, Jr. He was the regional qualifier in the oral interpretation. Congratulations to Terry for that accomplishment, also to the University High School Speech Coach, Mr. Glenn Price. Well, high school sponsors, you might want to take note of this next group because these students show a lot of promise in both academics and fine arts. We're proud to present the West Avenue Elementary Eagles, who've returned once again from the Destination Imagination State Tournament that was held in Lubbock this year. The team took 10th place at state in stage performance. They also brought home the Renaissance Award, one of only three special awards for their performance of the Disappearance Act, Vanished. Now, the Renaissance Awards for Outstanding Design, Engineering, Execution, and Performance, and in case you're wondering, Destination Imagination's an academic competition that gives students an opportunity to learn and experience the creative process. The team works collaboratively to solve problems using science, technology, engineering, math, community service, or the fine arts. And now, the West Avenue Elementary Destination Imagination Team members with us tonight, yet here are Salinas. Mark Gomez. Danae Perez. And Viana Ramos. The sponsors are Angel Wright and Carolyn Green, the head coaches, Sonia Ashford and Great job with all those fantastic young people. Destination Imagination Team, very good. And more good news statewide for the Fine Arts Program, a University High School Choir student was recently named a Texas Music Scholar. Magnolia Oliphant, a sophomore and alto, was nominated for this honor by University High Choir Director Lucy Murphy. The award is given by the Texas Music Educators Association, which also sponsors the Texas All-State Bands, Orchestras, and Choirs. Last year, fewer than 2,300 students statewide were named as Texas Music Scholars. That prestigious award's for students who've exhibited outstanding qualities in scholastic merit, musicianship, and citizenship in their school and community. Congratulations, Magnolia, and thank you for the positive light you bring to the school Also, congratulations to Choir Director Lucy Murphy and Assistant Choir Director Eric Wolf. Great students are a reflection of great teachers. We know that. It's also been another fantastic year for the fine arts at Waco ISD. Under the leadership of hard-working directors, our fine arts students are achieving excellence at both the middle school and high school levels, and this month, we're pleased to recognize the fine arts programs at Waco High and its feeder schools. We'll begin with the Tennyson Middle School Choirs, where the varsity women and non-varsity men's choirs both received sweepstakes ratings at the UIL Concert and Sight Reading Contest on April 7th. Incidentally, sweepstakes is the most prestigious award a musical group can attain in a UIL contest. This means that both choirs received overall ratings of superior in both the concert and sight reading. sight-reading portions of the competition. Now additionally, seven students from these choirs were also selected to the 2017 Texas Music Educators Association All-Region Middle School Choir. Now, our Sweepstakes Choir members from Tennyson Middle School. Davion Elliott. Gabriel Fields. He was All-Region Choir member. Gibram Galino, also All-Region Choir. Noah Marshall. Jairo Romero. Karen D. Parker. Sarah Soto. Isabel Weaver, who is also All-Region Choir. Bethany Williams. The Tennyson Choir's directed by Joy Marshall. We also want to recognize a distinguished art student from University High tonight. Adam Aguilar is a senior, and he had a perfect score and a gold medal for his piece entitled "The Rapture" at the state meet. Now, Adam is... For the first time ever this year, we had an art student in the vase competition qualify for state in consecutive years, and that was Adam, and also a University High student. Adam is enlisted in the Army and headed to Georgia for training. So, another round of applause for Adam Aguilar. And his instructor, Renee Ebling, from University. And way to go, Renee. State art competition, a gold medal winner. Tennyson Middle School Band Department's marching to the end of a very successful school year. These bands have gained countless hours of practice, providing entertainment at public venues like the Open Air Rotunda at the State Capitol Building in Austin, the Waco ISD Night of Jazz, and many other public functions throughout the year. And of course, that practice has served them well in competition. Thirty-one students earned chairs in the Waco ISD Middle School All-District Band. Seventy-four students earned a First Division on a solo and/or an ensemble at the District Middle School Solo and Ensemble Contest in February. And both the Symphonic and the Honors Bands received a plaque for a First Division rating in sight-reading at the UIL Contest last month. The Beginning Band, the Concert Band, and Jazz Bands earned excellent and superior ratings at the Sandy Lake Fun Fest. Fifty-seven Beginning Band students earned a medal for a First Division solo performance. And finally, tonight, we're presenting for recognition sixteen students who earned chairs in one of the All-Region Bands, along with one of whom received distinction for being the most outstanding musician in her room at the District Solo and Ensemble Contest. Our first student to be awarded, Samantha Navah, from Waco ISD, outstanding soloist. And the Director of Bands is Kimberly Tucker, right here. Now, you must be very proud of the growth and achievements the Tennyson Band students have shown this year. Very good. All right, our Waco High Choral Department took 113 students to the UIL Concert and Sight Reading Competition in April. They took seven choirs to this competition, and four of them returned with awards. Three of those choirs returned with Sweepstakes awards, meaning they received ones in both concert and sight-reading, under the direction of Kristi Lujan. And the Varsity Men's Choir earned straight ones in sight-reading, and the Non-Varsity Women's Choir received straight ones from all of the judges. Under the direction of Carrie Forehand, the Varsity Women and the Varsity Mixed Choir earned the coveted Sweepstakes Award, with the Mixed Choir also earning straight ones from every judge. The following students earned Sweepstakes for Non-Varsity Women's Choir. Caitlin Brennan. Priscilla Herrera. Brianna Tikarot. In addition to the other awards, we'll mention the following students earned Sweepstakes for Varsity Mixed Choir. Isaac Arterburn. For sight-reading plaque. Nicholas Atkins, also for sight-reading plaque. Carrie Berkley, sight-reading plaque. Derby Carlson, a Sweepstakes for Varsity Women's Choir. Elizabeth Grant, Sweepstakes for Varsity Women's Choir. Emily Hines, a Sweepstakes for Varsity Women's Choir. Kaylee Huser, Sweepstakes for Varsity Women's Choir. Olivia Jackson, for Varsity Women's Choir. Alex Luhon, for sight-reading plaque. Chloe Maddox, for Varsity Women's Choir, Sweepstakes. Hallie Maddox, for Sweepstakes for Varsity Women's Choir. Haley Miller, Sweepstakes for Varsity Women's Choir. Erica Powell, Sweepstakes for Varsity Women's Choir. Eduardo Reyes, for sight-reading plaque. Anna Zander, the Sweepstakes for Varsity Women's Choir. And congratulations again to our Assistant Choir Director, Kristi Luhon, and our Head Choir Director, Carrie Forehand. A lot of our basketball players, the UHS basketball players that went so far in the playoffs are at a banquet tonight, but one of them is here, Postman Jabril Washington, who is, has signed a letter of intent to play basketball at Temple College. He's also done a pretty good job with track. He averages eight and a half points and 8.9 rebounds on the court. He's one of the top shot blockers in the state, 5.7 blocks per game. And that hang time also helped him place in the 5A Boys High Jump at the UIL State Track Meet in Austin. He matched his previous record of six feet, eight inches, and returned home with a bronze medal in the state from the state track meet. Congratulations, Jabril, on your success and your hard work. And his coach is here as well. We'd like to congratulate you for doing a good job with him, Jeff Noonan, okay? All right, "Career in Technical Education at Waco ISD is enhancing the classroom experience with unique educational options to better prepare students for future careers." Now, Skills USA is a national career student organization serving high school students enrolled in training programs in technical, skilled, and service occupations. Waco High had 38 students advanced to compete at the state level in Corpus Christi this year. And the following students placed at state in their competitions. Enrique Perez, in architecture. He got a red ribbon. In animation technoly...technology. In photography. She got a blue ribbon, as did Fallon Bain. The photography advisor for that group is our good man, Jose Yau. Okay, in automotive service technology, we've got a great lab there. A blue ribbon for David Basio. And a blue ribbon also for Mario Cano. And the automotive advisors are Mark Penny and Casey Doherty. Also Milton Campos and Mario Chavez. And when we did the architecture students, Eileen, we also neglected to put in there, we should say, Randall Widener is the advisor there. And the Skills USA Campus Director, responsible for a lot of this success, Tara Mulcahy. And certainly, last but not least, we should recognize Donna McKethen, our Career and Technical Director for Waco ISD. Now, CTE continues to graduate students who are highly motivated and successful. Students who take advantage of the Career Academy offerings coupled with rigorous academic courses finish high school better prepared to pursue their academic and career goals. To showcase outstanding students, the CTE Student of the Month Recognition Program was created. So, each month, teachers on each high school campus nominate a CTE student who exemplifies the qualities of leadership, academic success, and a focus on career goals. And students who receive this honor write an essay that includes the strengths of their chosen academy and their future plans. These essays are featured on the CTE website. They're also used by CTE directors across the state for scoring purposes. Now, the CTE Students of the Year for University High and Waco High were honored last week at the respective CTE Awards Banquets, and tonight, we will introduce to you our CTE Students of the Year, both of them are seniors, from University High School, Anna Stewart. And from Waco High School, Eileen Arinevas. And Anna and Eileen, you stayed? Have you stayed up here? Based on that same scoring matrix, the CTE Program is awarding an additional honor for the very first time tonight. The Waco ISD CTE Student of the Year Award is a district-wide award, and this year, it goes to, for the very first time, Eileen Arinevas, from Waco High School. We've got a nice trophy for you here. Now, Eileen, that is a traveling trophy, so you get to keep it for a year until someone wins it next year. So, congratulations to you. It's a great honor. And congratulations to both these exceptional students. Now, our final item on the special recognition portion of the agenda tonight is to give the oath of office to a new Waco ISD Police Officer. But before we do that, we wanted to mention another member of our police department who was caught last month in an impressive random act of kindness. Happened right here before last month's board meeting, as a student was entering the room just outside the exterior door there to be recognized. That student was dressed from head to toe in his Sunday best, but as any and every man can attest, learning to tie a tie for the first time is like an upper-level calculus course. Noticing that the young man was struggling a bit with his knot, Lieutenant David Williams arrived on the scene and was quick to demonstrate his Windsor knot tying skills. It was a little bit dark to get a good picture of this, but you could kind of make it out to see. And we appreciate Lieutenant Williams. He was helping that young man tie his tie so that young man could come in and get an award. It was a touching picture. And so, we appreciate Lieutenant Williams, and we want to recognize him for also serving as a role model to our students, as evidenced by his courteous disposition, his sterling character, and his demonstration of compassion. He did good with his tie tonight, too. Way to go, Lieutenant. Didn't need any help. Very good. All right, and our last item. Waco ISD's fortunate to have some of the finest men and women who proudly wear the badge and live the Peace Officer's Oath each and every day, so that we can work and our students can learn in a safe environment. And tonight, we are welcoming a new member of the Waco ISD Police Department. Stephen Gersh joins us after retiring from the Hill County Sheriff's Office, where he served for 23 years.
Officer Gersh began his career with Hill County Sheriff's Office in 1993 as a telecommunicator 911 dispatcher. Over the years, he worked his way through the ranks, serving as a jailer, a deputy, and eventually rising to the rank of Chief Deputy to the Sheriff. He holds an Associate of Arts degree from Blinn College, a Master Peace Officer Certification, a Master Telecommunicator Certification, a Master Jailer Certification, and is also a Certified T-Cole Police Instructor. Some of you may know his son, Justin Gersh, who was the Constable in Hill County. We're pleased to have Officer Gersh with us now. You ready to take the oath? I, Stephen Gersh...
I, Stephen Gersh...
...do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear...
...that I will faithfully execute the duties...
That I will faithfully execute the duties...
...of the Office of Peace Officer...
Of the Office of Peace Officer...
...with the Waco Independent School District...
With the Waco Independent School District...
...of the state of Texas...
Of the state of Texas...
...and will, to the best of my ability...
And will, to the best of my ability...
...without partiality or prejudice...
Without partiality or prejudice...
...preserve, protect, and defend the Constitution... Preserve, protect, and defend the Constitution.
Preserve, protect, and defend the Constitution.
And laws of the United States.
And laws of the United States.
And this state.
And this state.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Chief, would you pin the badge on our newest officer?
Thank you, sir. Welcome aboard.
That concludes the special recognition port- portion of our agenda. Was it a great year, Waco ISD, or what?
That was fantastic. Congratulations to everyone honored tonight. We will now go back up to Item 7 with an explanation. Item 7 is the administration of the oath of office for board members. We have a number of folks who've had a number of things going on this week. I know Mr. Dupuy has been at Waco High for various events the last three nights. Mr. Perez is at University High tonight for the athletics banquet. Mr. Wee had another family commitment tonight. Mr. Sykes and I were at the Guama Guaca graduation last night, and then the GT Product Fair the night before. There's a lot going on, all of which is to say, prior to tonight's meeting, Mr. Perez, Mr. Dupuy both took the oath back in closed session. They're officially sworn in. You can trust me on that.
We have witnesses.
We did have witnesses. So, we won't do a formal administration of the oath out here, but in accordance with the Texas Education Code, in the meeting following each year's election, we do need to reorganize the board. And so I don't know if there's a presentation from anyone, or if we're just taking motion and nominations from the board for the positions of President, Vice President, and Secretary. Otherwise, I'm going to have to second themselves. Devin, you may be making a lot of nominations tonight.
Mr. President.
Mr. Sykes.
It's my pleasure to nominate Mr. Pat Atkins as President of the Board of Trustees of Waco ISD.
I would, before you second that, I would point out that we got three board members who are absent tonight. They couldn't do anything if we were to put them in these positions.
That was contemplated, but we'd avoided that.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Sykes. Thank you, Mr. Manning. Were there any other nominations from the floor? All right. I guess we will formally vote. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? I guess I abstained. And with all humility. We'll now move on to the Office of Vice President. Thank you.
Our one victory there.
Mr. President.
I've got my fan club over here of three. Mr. Manning.
I nominate Mr. Alan Sykes as Vice President of the Waco Independent School District Board.
Thank you, Mr. Manning. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Cordawag. Any other nominations? Once again, here's your chance to stick it to those who are absent this evening.
You didn't ask for other nominations when you were nominated.
You're a little defensive there. All right. Hearing none, then all those in favor say aye. Aye. All those opposed? All right. Motion carries unanimously. And the last office to be filled is the Office of Secretary.
I vote Norman Manning. Continuing the Office of Secretary.
Second.
All right. It's been moved and seconded that Mr. Manning remain as Secretary. Once again, are there any other nominations? All right. Hearing none, we'll proceed to a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Congratulations, Mr. Manning. All right, we'll move down to Item 10 now, Audience for Guests. And we do have someone here tonight, special guest from the Clinton County Pack of Hope.
The mother of Pack.
Our dear friend, Mrs. Jane Bounds.
Founder, yeah.
I have a team.
Ah, come on, team.
I don't have the whole team on my list. But in all seriousness, Jane, introduce the other folks when they come up who are helping you out on the team.
Introduce them?
Sure. If they're here, all these folks over here.
They're a shy bunch.
Part of the team.
I know.
They're a shy bunch.
I'll let them introduce themselves.
All right, we can do that.
But I want to say that tonight is so impressive, shows you what fine arts and a good program can do to a school district. It's just awesome. So proud. Y'all want to introduce yourselves to the...
Linda King, Waco ISD Food Service Manager.
Dean Tran, Robinson ISD.
Good evening, Cliffery, Food Service Director, Waco.
Officer Harvorn, Waco ISD.
Ramirez, with Pack of Hope also, and Food Service Manager.
Jill Sanders, China Spring ISD.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
Volunteer pecker. You know, a lot of, a lot of kudos have gone around tonight. And to the board, to all of you, we are just so thrilled to see what's going on. But there's one person, Dr. Kane, who in the six years that the Pack of Hope has been in operation, has been a very supportive person, never told us no, let us roam the building to sell tickets, let us use the scoreboard in the stadium, just anything we asked for and even made suggestions of things we didn't know that we could ask for. And so for that, Dr. Kane, we want to say thank you for all of your support and wish you the very best in your future endeavors.
Thank you. And thank you for the most wonderful program to help our children.
Well, we've got to keep it going.
And the, the next superintendent is going to be just as eager, and we'll just take it to the next level with you.
Maybe you could leave a brochure on there.
Not a problem. Not a problem. I know him, and he is already on board.
Thank you all.
Thank you. Thank you for your kind words.
Jane, you had two more minutes if you wanted to keep... Appreciate y'all's time. Appreciate everything y'all do for the kids in this community. We will move on to the consent agenda. I've been asked to pull Item K. Is there anything else that's supposed to be pulled from the consent agenda? All right. Then I will entertain a motion to adopt the consent agenda with the exception of Item K. So move. Thank you, Mr. Manning. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Sykes. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Consent agenda is adopted unanimously. Item K, we're just taking no action.
Correct.
All right. And we will move on to discussion and possible action. And I think somebody asked me to move this one up to the very beginning of the meeting. I apologize. But we will now do the hiring of administrators. Dr. Kane?
Yes. Administration is recommending that Lauren Frazier... Lauren, if you'd please stand up. Lauren Frazier is being recommended for the Dean of Instruction for Cesar Chavez Middle School. Lauren has been in education for six years. Before moving into administration, she taught sixth through eighth grade math for three years. She also served as the Math and Science Instructional Specialist for three years at Chavez. Ms. Frazier is being recommended for the position of Dean of Instruction. She has a Master's of Education in Educational Administration, and her bachelor's degree is in mathematics. She, in her leisure time, she enjoys spending time with her husband, which... Okay, here's the family. Okay, with her family, friends, and dog, Barkley. Barkley. That's cute. She enjoys working outside in the yard and reading books, and she also enjoys traveling with her husband, who must be traveling alone. And so that's, will be administration's recommendation for the Dean of Instruction. We are also recommending Larry Kling. Mr. Kling? For Assistant Principal at Cesar Chavez. Larry Kling has been in education for four years. Before moving into education, he served in the US Army as a non-commissioned officer. He taught biology at Waco High School and is now being recommended for the Assistant Principal position at Chavez. He has a Bachelor's of Arts in Philosophy from Texas Tech, and his Educational Leadership and Administration Masters was in 2016 from Baylor. In his leisure time, he enjoys spending time outdoors with his family, especially outdoors with his son Eli and wife Lindsay. So we are recommending that he be the Assistant Principal for Chavez and that Derek Smith, who is not here, correct? Who is not here, was unable to be here as Assistant Principal at Waco High.
Thank you, Dr. Kane. Is there a motion to accept the administration's recommendation? Apparently not, I'm sorry.
I move that we accept the administration's recommendation.
Good idea. Thank you, Ms. Cordawag.
Sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Sykes.
Suzanne was ready to make a motion.
Making me a little nervous as well. All right. But we've got a motion that's been seconded. Any questions, comments, or discussion? All those in...
I've got a question. What was your primary MOS and HONI?
Mr. Love and Brother, sir.
Salute you, sir. I'm old HONI.
Thank you, Mr. Manning. No, I'm glad you did. Appreciate that. Any other comments, questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Last item for discussion or possible action is the Lone Star Governance Goal Progress Measure 3.2 regarding certifications completed. Dr. Kane?
Well, and we also, the next... I was wondering, Mr. Love, how you let that gentleman go. I'm thinking, you must have been dozing whenever...
Dog, he does.
Hey, don't think he's not out there making calls. As soon as he leaves, he'll be texting Mr. Kling. Thank you, Mr. Love. Yes, Mr. President, first, I would like to call the board's attention to the updated time tracker information. That is part of our goal, is just to review. We updated it for last week, and you will just be getting the last copy till you can see how that time spanned. And then the second is the monitoring for Goal Progress Measure 3.2. If there's any questions... Oh, there's Ms. McKethen. You moved on me. I'm thinking, I knew where you were. No, that's okay. Was there anything you wanted to add? I mean, you did such a great job. Are there any questions? Again, this is the form. We've kind of refined it a little bit more, because it's not the form. But if, I'd like some feedback from the board instead of just presenting the information, the fact that we kind of... Is that helping?
No, I think it's helpful to kind of get the summary on the front.
So, unless there's questions...
Are there any questions about the progress measure on the certifications completed?
We, 68%? Okay, well, then that's all... That means we're on track for Goal Number Three, which is to increase the percentage of graduates displaying career readiness by completing a workforce prep program. We're trying to move from 65% to 80%, and this is one of our progress measures. And we are on track.
Last item on the agenda is announcements.
Never. Never, ever, ever.
Well, graduations around the corner. Commencement ceremonies are Saturday, June 3, Waco High at 3:00 PM. University High will be that night at 7:00 PM. The rehearsals will be May 31 for both schools. Waco High at 10:00 in the morning, the Trojans at 12:30. Tomorrow morning at 8:00 AM in the gym at Waco High, six more Waco High athletes will sign college letters of intent. And that'll raise the total to 14 from Waco High, who will continue their athletic careers at the college level, higher level. So, good job for the athletic department at Waco High. This Saturday is the Texas State Solo and Ensemble Contest in Austin. We've got a number of choir and band students qualified for that competition. There's also some drama at Indian Spring Middle School, as in fine arts. They're presenting their version of "The Wiz" Saturday afternoon at 2:30 and then at 4:00 PM. Monday, of course, is Memorial Day, no school that day. And then Thursday is the last day of school, so there'll be early release that day. And also that morning on Thursday, June 1, MCC is donating a significant number of books to students at the J.H. Heinz Campus for summer reading. And we thank them very much for that, and help the kids have some good books for the summer. Friday, June 2, our retiring employees' recognition breakfast at the Baylor Club. Sunday, June 4, Beville Cone Day at Bell's Hill Elementary. Staff and the community will thank her for her four decades as an educator that afternoon from 2:00 to 4:00 at the campus cafeteria. Thursday, June 8, is our Adopt a School Awards Breakfast at Guam this year. We'll be honoring our top volunteer partners who help our campuses so much all year long. And Waco ISD has two students who will be competing at the National History Day Finals. Gloria Knatsir and Neil Dupuy will be in Maryland at June 11 through the 15. They'll be representing us and trying to carry on a tradition of excellence that Waco is developing at that competition. Looking further ahead, Tuesday, June 20, the Waco NAACP and the National Sorority of Phi Delta Capital are hosting a public reception to meet our incoming superintendent, Dr. A. Marcus Nelson. That will be from 5:30 to 7:30 at the multipurpose building on the Quinn Campus at 1020 Elm Avenue. And then once again tonight, as we all saw, so much more evidence of all the good things happening here in Waco ISD and trustees. And Dr. Kane, thank you for your leadership.
Thank you, Bruce. I want to pause for a moment. Bruce, I want to thank you and Dr. Kane. I mean, the last three months, you've brought a number of students forward who've accomplished amazing things academically, athletically, and in the fine arts. It's been well organized, and it's really helped put this district best-faced forward. So thank y'all for your efforts in continuing to recognize our student achievements. Before I bang the gavel, I have to acknowledge that this is Dr. Kane's final meeting as a superintendent of Waco ISD. And I have worked with you as closely as anybody on this board, and I cannot put into words how much I appreciate your leadership, your friendship, occasionally your sense of humor.
Occasionally.
I'm usually the butt of the joke, so I... But you look at the things that have been accomplished, and we all talk about the programs that have been put in place the last few years, like the Atlas Academy, like the Advanced Manufacturing Academy, the Advanced Healthcare Academy, the fact you've brought the High School Musical back to Waco ISD. But I was talking to Bruce earlier this week. It's, it's not the programs. It's the individual students whose lives you have literally changed by bringing those to this district. We were at the Guam graduation last night, and they had an opportunity for all the young people who were going directly into the workforce, all stand up. Most of them with trucker caps on, which I thought was really cute. Probably from their employers. But that was a program that did not exist six years ago. And so six years ago, those young people who knew that college wasn't right for them would not have had an opportunity to receive that level of training and have a job waiting for them when they walk across the stage next week. And that, in large part, is because of your efforts and the things you've brought and your leadership. And so, again, we, you know, the state's championship in soccer, the countless kids who've advanced to solo and ensemble, and all the all-state recognitions and the National Merit Scholars, that's really your legacy. We talk about it in terms of programs, but it really is those individual lives and those young people. I think we need to pause and think about that and the benefit you've brought to those young people and to this community. And so, thank you.
Thank you for your kind words, and, but I have gained much more than they have just from being here. These are great kids. They really are. And it's a great staff, and this has been the shortest six years. It seemed like I just got here. Now, there are days. But most days, it seems like, but it has been a pleasure. It's like, Waco's the best-kept secret in the state. It really is a great place to live and work. And if I had, didn't have family in another part of the state, I'd stay here and run for the board and sit up here with y'all. Be Marcus Nelson's biggest cheerleader.
She's also trying to get in to where she can marry my father.
That's true. I believe Mrs. Hal Atkins.
The premise being, she thinks my kids would be great grandchildren. She thinks my wife would be a wonderful daughter-in-law, and she just wants to make me have to call her mom for the rest of my adult life. That was the way it was presented to me.
I am on this.
Board members, this is your last chance to take a shot as well. Mr. Manning?
While we were kind of, after closed session was over, we already traded our inside stories with each other. But, but in public, I admire you. I think you've done a great job for WISD. And I'm going to say it publicly, I'm going to miss you. I'm going to miss you. I have enjoyed... I have enjoyed, as I told you before, you were my first real superintendent, and I learned more from you than ever, because I truly was a rookie coming on this board. But you have been a great support, and the way your leadership, the way you... Even though I'm supposed to be one of your bosses, I know for a fact that, you know how, why it feels that... So, I understand that. And I really, I really do appreciate the moments that we are arguing with each other, the moments that we have, as we said, but we didn't go to bed angry. So, but like I say, I really appreciate everything you have done. The district has really changed under your leadership, and it is truly, like I say, once again, the recognition that we had tonight is just part of your legacy that you are leaving here in WISD. Thank you.
Thank you for your kind words.
Ms. Cordawag?
I second Norman's comment about learning a lot from you. I really have learned a great deal from your leadership and from actually just working with you and talking with you. You have done a lot through mentoring and modeling. I think I agree with Pat. I enjoy your sense of humor because Pat is the butt of most of your jokes.
Good.
But, yeah, and I think, I also agree with Pat. You have done probably more in six years than I've ever seen a superintendent come in and do. And I think that impact of those programs that you have put in place, they're just not, they're not just programs. They're kids' lives, and I would venture to say they're, that legacy is not going to just stop with them. It's going to go to their families. You really are giving them kind of that foot up, and I really want to thank you. And I'm going to miss you, too. I'm going to miss you.
The future family thing is important. It wasn't just for the children, it's for their and their future families, but thank you for saying that.
Ms. Sykes?
Repeating, you will be missed, absolutely. You are a very gifted and skilled administrator, and working over the last six years, all the work you've done, the high energy level that you bring every day to the office is amazing, and the work that you've done, the programs you've installed, the, I guess, the high level of integrity that you've brought will last a long time. And I think Dr. Nelson will understand that he's very fortunate to come in in the situation that you've left for him. So, I want to also end on a note that I now have find a friend. I don't know how it works, but I'm going to use it, and it's here, so expect me to, you know, ring your phone or whatever it is.
Always used to phone call everybody.
All right.
Everybody.
We appreciate you.
Thank you, Ms. Sykes. I would say one other thing. We have two very different styles, and it took a while the first year for us to get accustomed to it. But I do think, whether it was helping lead this board to make some difficult decisions on closing campuses, to reallocate dollars into programming and for employee benefits, and not paying for space we weren't using, or the TRE, or any number of other things where you and I have worked very closely, I think it's worked well. I tend to want to be deliberate and strategic, try to think through everything ahead of time, and I think there are times when I want to keep thinking about things, and you're obviously ready to go. And I think there are times it was time to go, and I think there were times, there were times to slow down and think...
Wait, 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 wait. You were right.
And I think, and I think over time, it's worked well together, and I've enjoyed our partnership and our friendship, and I'll say what everybody else has said, you will definitely be missed. And I know we have some folks who are absent this evening who've already communicated with you, and again, there is one more reception for this community to be able to have an opportunity to thank you as well. And with that, unless anybody else has any other announcements, hearing no objection, we'll stand adjourned.